That's weird. Catherine? Catherine, can you hear me?
Oh, there you go.
Hello, Catherine?
Yeah, it's me.
Hi, okay. I guess the Zoom put in a new safety feature. I have to actually allow people to enter into this.
Oh, no kidding.
I guess they've had so many complaints with them. Hi, Wayne. I guess they got so many complaints with security.
Right, they had a bad patch there.
Yeah. I'm not seeing, Wayne, do you have audio?
I had to click, you know, join the audio in the lower left-hand corner.
Yeah.
But possibly Wayne can't hear us.
Wayne, did you join audio?
Let me put something in the chat.
Yeah. There you go.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Michael.
Hi, Wayne. Hi, Catherine, how are you?
All right, how's everyone?
I have to put on a tie, Wayne, or am I okay this way?
I think you're okay.
Thank you, sir.
It's a habit for me.
Do you sleep in a tie?
Sometimes.
My father used to cut the grass in a tie.
I'm not that bad.
He was bad.
Your health is good, Wayne, you feel good?
Yeah, yeah, all is well, really good.
So Catherine, you decided not to run, that's a big, big decision.
Yep.
The city's lost, but your family's gained.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You let me know with the library, if you're still interested in participating, we'd love to have you there.
Okay.
I know how much you love it.
I do.
They're doing stupendously now.
Yeah, 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 John's just been fabulous.
A real gift.
Yeah.
How's your work, Wayne, are you able to manage?
Yes, working from home, set up, have access to systems and all that stuff. So only just, you know, a few little small things, but otherwise it works pretty well.
Good, good, hey Frederick? Fred? Hey, just getting onto a council meeting, all right? Awesome, you want to leave him on my doorstep? OEM office. Office of Emergency Management, he'll then bring it to the police, fire, ambulance, the hospital, the actor's home where they really need them. God bless you, man, thank you, I'm gonna give you a shout out at the council meeting, okay? You sure? Okay, all right, man. Okay, take care, Thursday, thank you. Should I end you so Rafael's email today? You think?
Hi.
In your Ventura apartment.
I'm on my phone this time, no glitches.
Bye-bye, take care, pal.
It's a lot easier with the mic this way, there's no problems.
Hey Levi, how are you?
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Looking, looking cool with a capital K.
Oh, thank you.
When was the last time you got all dressed up, Levi?
It's been a little while. Get some dust bunnies off of my suit jacket and...
He's got pajamas on the bottom, that's what he's got.
Oh, long overdue.
Yeah.
Stand up, Levi.
Michael, I can't see you, so...
You don't want to.
The president, I think the president is trying to put us out of business. I may be applying for the city manager job myself soon.
He's trying.
You just can't shoot straight, Wayne. What he's coming up with is ridiculous, it's all political basturing.
That's all it is, there's no substance behind it.
It's remarkable. And all he's doing is scaring everybody now who has a visa to apply for a green card, and who has a green card to apply for citizenship.
Oh, yeah, well, that's on top of everything else he's doing and has done. There's no rhyme or reason behind it. It's all expediency and, you know, it's not connected to anything, it's not helping.
Not at all.
Hey, Michael. It's in the email I sent you, I sent you an email invite a long time ago. It's also on our website, no, I sent it Friday, it's also on our website, go on the city's website. No, it was a separate, it was a separate email, it was an invitation.
I have it copied, I can send it soon.
If you go on the city's website, Michael, you'll see under, you'll see the meeting, if you click on the meeting, the notice will pop up and the link is in there. It was a meeting invitation.
Yes, tell him that I'll text it to him.
Okay, Mayor said he'll text it to you. Okay, he's asking if you can email it to him.
Sure. Would he like a glass of wine?
Did you hear that? Okay, all right, all right, all right.
Done.
Thank you, man.
No problem, maybe like glass of wine is actually quite the order.
Anyone know who 3907773 is? I don't know who it is, I don't know if to unmute them and... 327?
It might be Gary.
Okay.
Might be Gary, let me check his, my contact, if that's, I think it's him.
And who ends in 8867?
3907773, that's him.
That's Gary.
Yeah, it's Gary.
Good evening, all, Gary Vincent.
Hey Gary, how are you?
Good, how's everybody?
How are you?
Good.
Nancy, who are we waiting for?
Michael Cohen, he's trying to log on right now.
Everybody else is here?
And Cheryl, where's Cheryl?
She said she would be here on time.
There's a number I'm not recognizing, it's 973-271-8867.
That's probably, I bet that's Greg.
No, Greg is on.
Is he on?
Yeah.
I'll text Cheryl and I'll send her the coordinates by text also.
There's Michael again. Hey, Michael.
We go to, we go to this thing every meeting.
You see the meeting, the list of meetings on the side? Go on the council meeting, click on it, and you'll see the meeting notice.
I emailed him.
Yeah. And inside the notice is the link. Okay. Yeah, it's having you join. Okay. All right.
You see me?
Where are you? Yep, okay.
Thanks.
That just leaves Councilwoman Rosenberg. Anybody knows where she is?
I texted her just now with the coordinates for the Zoom, I'll try her cellphone.
When I tried that, those numbers you sent me, Mike, they, it's an incorrect password when I tried putting it in.
Oh. No answer.
Um, 7:35, do you want to get started, Mr. Cobb?
Yep.
Okay.
I call this council meeting of April 21st, 2020, to order at 7:35 PM. Will everybody rise with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance... Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic...
Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Would a city clerk please read the Public Open Meeting Act?
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Notice of this meeting was included in a notice sent to the record in the Star Ledger and advertised in said newspapers on January 17th, 2020, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has roommates posted as required notices under the statute. A copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Please also take notice that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at speed, and in consideration of Executive Order Number 103 issued by Governor Murphy on March 9th, 2020, declaring a state of emergency and a public health emergency in the state of New Jersey, the City of Englewood does hereby notify the public that to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, while ensuring the continued functioning of government, the City Council meeting scheduled for April 21st, 2020 at the Englewood Municipal Court, 733 Ramfron Street, Englewood, New Jersey, 07631, will be held telephonically via Zoom only. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by clicking on the links, also on our website, or by dialing 1-9292-056099, followed by passcode 88513573205 at 7:30 PM. Individuals calling into this number will be able to fully participate at the meeting, including providing public comment. A non-public dial-in number will be used if closed session is required. Proper notice I haven't given, the municipal clerk is directed to conclude the statement in the minute.
Will the city clerk please do the roll call?
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Here.
Councilman Hamer?
Here.
Try Councilwoman Rosenberg?
She's not here yet.
And Council President Cobb?
Here.
Also present is Mayor Michael Wiles and City Attorney Levi Cool for Bill Bailey.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of bills and claims for Resolution 108 in the amount of $783,177.26.
So moved.
I'll second it. Any questions? No questions?
No.
Is Mr. Kaufman there?
I am.
Okay, I have a question about the brain system, the $30,600.80 and the $28,583.31, I don't know if Mr. Valsey is on the line?
He is.
He is?
Yep.
Mr. Valsey, what's the latest update with this brain system? We've been doing this for about a year now, I think, so is this final payment?
Yeah, it's not the final payment, but it is essentially done. Unfortunately, the manufacturer has to come out and do the training of the DPW workers, et cetera, as to how to work the system, but with the current climate and the pandemic, it's sort of been...
A little tough.
Hesitant to get together. And the DPW also has the York closed right now, so we can't finalize the project, but for the most part, it is done. It's just a little bit of odds and ends to get completed, but it's essentially...
Okay, I have another item, Bartel, Bartel Design Group, and I asked Mr. Kaufman about it today, and I believe between you and Mr. Kaufman, you can kind of tell me, he sent me the backup on it, but just wanted to know what kind of work they were actually doing down there, are you familiar with that?
Find it on the building.
It's a, it says, excuse me, invoice ICE maintenance from January through, most of it is through February, including minor equipment maintenance, water filter cleaning change, Zamboni fixing, and Zamboni repair.
So would I take this to be that it was just like general maintenance of equipment down here?
It sounds like it.
I just forwarded Franz the copies of the invoices.
Yeah, that's something that Kent Katz could probably, unfortunately, could probably speak more on, but that looks like that's just general maintenance of running the arena.
Okay, all right, and then my last question is, I see that, and Nancy, you probably can answer this as well. I see that we had five items, you know, all associated with, I guess, the COVID-19, with the mask, and it looks like we have four more mask orders, or four mask entries, and one sanitary wipes. Are these things being tracked somewhere else as well?
Yes, we're keeping track of all of these purchases, so that we can get reimbursed via FEMA or through the county's, through the stimulus money, which is the one we're able to get reimbursed with. We're going to try everything we can, but at this point, all departments are keeping track of all their expenses, and we're trying to keep everything in a centralized location as well. So it's a, it's a big expense so far.
All right, okay, fine, so I'm okay if there's no other questions. Want to do the roll call, Nancy?
Sure. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Vote yes.
Council President Cobb?
Yes, I have a request, we need to, and this is out of order, we need to amend the... The agenda today. We received a letter from Loretta Weinberg's office with Gordon Johnson and Valerie Huddle about light for fight, I hope I said that, or fight for light, and we, I want to amend the agenda, unanimous consent to put this on the agenda in the section after we vote on all our resolutions.
So moved. Second.
And I believe everybody received that, right?
Yes, I received it this afternoon, and also Assemblyman Johnson is on the call, if anyone has a question.
Assemblyman Johnson will speak to that, when we get to that portion of the agenda, I believe.
So we do need a roll call, though, to add to the agenda. Do you want to ask for a roll call?
Roll call, please.
To add resolution number 117 to the agenda.
117?
Yes, this will be number 117.
Okay.
Okay, Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Vote yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. Now, ordinances for our public hearing, second reading, ordinance 20-01. Consideration will now be given to ordinance -2001. Will the clerk please read the ordinance by title?
This is calendar year 2020, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a capex under NJSA 48:4514.
Are you finished, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, I declare that the public hearing on this ordinance is open. If there is anyone who desires to be heard or to ask a question because ordinance, he or she should be, will be heard at this time. Please come forward to the mic, or in this case, to your computer, or however you're communicating, and give your name, your address for the record.
Just a reminder to the public, if you go to the bottom of your screen, under reactions, if you click on that, there's a raise hand option, so you can do raise hand, and I will unmute you to be able to speak. I'm not seeing any raised hands.
You're not seeing anybody? If no one wishes to be heard, I will now close the public hearing. We need a council member to move the ordinance.
I so moved.
Okay, for to be adopted, a second, emotion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cohen?
Well.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Vote yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. I declare the motion carried, and that the ordinance is duly adopted, and that the ordinance be published once by title only in the record. Ordinances and introductions for first reading, we have none. Next, we move to the 2020 Municipal Budget Resolution 109-04-21-20. Resolution to allow book to be read by title only. I will ask for a motion and a second to approve this Resolution 109. A motion to approve this Resolution 109?
Otherwise, I have to read the entire budget into the record.
Did somebody say something?
Yeah. You're not adopting the budget right now, you're just saying that it's okay to read it by title, otherwise, like I said, we have to sit and read the entire budget into the record.
Sure, so moved.
Anybody second it?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cohen?
Yep.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Vote yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. I declare the motion carried and Resolution 109 duly approved. Public hearing on budget, on, public hearing on 2020 budget. The meeting will open to the public on the pub 2020 municipal budget only, president, okay. I'm having a bad day here.
Yeah, sorry, no microphone.
Yeah, I'm reading it. Okay, to the mic, does anybody have, would like to address this, please come to the mic and be heard.
Same thing to the public, just go to the bottom of your screen under reactions, you can do raise hand, and let me know, I'm looking at the screen.
Point of order?
Yes, Councilman.
Just for clarity, would you or the city clerk, please, let everyone, once again, just know what it is, what section in the agenda we're presently discussing and what the, you know, what we're doing. I just want to make sure it was heard by everyone.
Okay, we're having a public hearing on the 2020 budget, right? And it's Resolution 110, I believe, right?
Right now, we're under a public hearing, under a public hearing for the 2020 municipal budget.
Correct.
And that this is an opportunity for public comment with regard to the budget, if there are any questions.
Correct, that's correct.
That's all.
I'm not seeing anyone raise their hands.
Okay, so then we go to Resolution 110, right?
Want to close the public hearing?
I want to close the public session, and now we'll move on to Resolution 110-104-21-20, resolution to amend the 2020 budget.
Did you want Gary to speak on that first?
Gary, you can give us a little background there, please?
Sure, behalf of the, the resolution to amend the budget is actually taking monies that were originally appropriated under the Burton County Utilities Authority appropriation. This year's bill from the BCUA is actually less than last year's. The bill came in after the budget was introduced, so there will be a transfer of $540,000 from the BCUA bill to a new line item to cover the expenses that the city is incurring as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So a new line item is created in the budget, the decrease does not affect, or either item does not affect the total budget or the tax levy, but because the change to the BCUA line is more than 10%,
Right.
this resolution needs to be advertised in the local newspaper, so the action tonight is merely amending the budget. At the next meeting, you will have a hearing on this budget amendment, at which time then you can adopt the budget. So tonight's action is strictly to amend the 2020 budget for those two line items.
Okay. I need a motion and a second to approve
Move.
this Resolution 110. Councilman Hamer, he gave the motion, you need a second?
I'll second it. I also have a question I'd like to ask.
Go ahead.
Gary, do we know why the decrease, I mean, it's happy news for us, but why it's such a significant increase from the sewer authority?
You know, it's very difficult, because I think Michael can attest to this, the last few years, the bill, the annual bill, has increased and decreased certain years. There really is no rhyme or reason. Overall county, there was a slight increase, but the increases predominantly were in northern Burton County. So the BCUA obviously does monitor the flow, and it's based, obviously, on all their internal records, but I really can't give you a definitive reason why the charge for this year would be that much lower. I think it's actually like an 8% decrease. Obviously, the concern is what's going to happen next year.
When we had, when we had an 11% increase a couple of years ago, I tried finding out the reason why, and the BCUA, it's so convoluted, there are formulas and flow charts and then usage, and it's very complicated. Basically, you would need like a PhD to understand how to come up with why it goes up or down, so it's very hard to explain.
Okay. So we're going to roll call, I mean, we had to roll call.
No.
Roll call, please, that's right, go ahead.
Councilman Cohen?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Vote yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. I declare the motion carried and Resolution 110 duly approved. Next is Special Improvement District fiscal year 2021 budget. I ask for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 111.
So moved.
I'll second it. Any questions? Councilman Hamer, would you like to say something in this space right here, I know the Special Improvement District, you are on that board.
Yes, this is an amended, actually, this resolution puts in, to place our budget for the current fiscal, the upcoming fiscal year, sorry, and it also takes into consideration the tough times that many of the merchants are going through throughout this pandemic, and what we're going to do if this budget is approved is reduce the fees for Cid members for the first two quarters of the upcoming fiscal year. So the current, we're in the last quarter of the, you know, 2021 budget, and, you know, those fees are already set, they've been billed and invoiced since, you know, the beginning of the, actually, since last year. So what we're doing is trying to help out the merchants as much as possible by, you know, giving up the fee for the first two quarters of the upcoming fiscal year. So if it's approved, that's the intent, and that's what we're going to do.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Hello? Is this one clear? So this is to vote on? It was, I was going, it was going in and out a little bit, I think, this is, just like, I'm just clear, Nancy, this is, we're voting on what specifically here?
Voting on the budget for the fiscal year 2021, which begins July 1st, and if approved, the approved budget will allow us to forgive fees for the first two quarters of the upcoming fiscal year, so that merchants get a bit of, a good bit of a break on, on some of the expenses that they have to incur.
Do we know, do we know what the overall number of that amount is?
Approximately $125,000 collectively. The budget is $250,000 annually,
Okay.
and we are having the budget, so the fees will be collected in the amount of $125,000 for the second, for the third and fourth quarter of the upcoming fiscal year.
And the specific, but this does not affect our overall levy, right? Or if it does, it doesn't affect it by much?
This has nothing to do with
That's what I thought, just want to make sure, okay, just want to confirm, because I was going in and out a little bit before, okay, thank you.
So what's your vote?
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn? Councilman Hamer?
Vote yes.
And Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. I declare, I declare the motion carried and the resolution duly approved. Now we go to public comment on agenda items 112 through 116. If anyone likes, wishes to speak about these resolutions, please come, state your name, address, and you have two minutes to speak on any of these resolutions. These resolutions are up for this consent agenda.
The same as before, bottom of the screen, under reactions, just raise your hand, any member of the public wishes to speak. I'm not seeing any raised hands. No, no raised hands.
No raised hands. So we'll close the public comment on agenda items 112 through 116, and we move for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second it. Roll call, please.
Want to ask if anyone wanted to?
Anyone having comments?
Well.
No comments.
Okay, roll call, you want me to do?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Vote yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes, too. I declare the motion carried and the resolution is duly adopted. We have one resolution, 117, where we received a letter today from Loretta Weinberg, Gordon Johnson, and Valerie Huddle's office. Nancy, would we, is Gordon Johnson on?
Yes, he's here.
Can we get Gordon to speak to this?
If he'd like to.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Yes, Council President, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, I can hear you, I believe we can, yes.
But first of all, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Council President Cobb and Councilman Hamer and Councilman Cohen and Councilwoman Glenn, and a great city clerk, Nancy Warmus, and the city's mayor, was on the phone with earlier today, Michael, how you doing there?
Very well, thank you, Gordon.
Yes, letting this resolution go forward. It just recognizes the healthcare workers that are putting themselves in harm's way here and working so hard to get us through the crisis. It recognizes the doctors, the nurses, the respiratory therapists, paramedics, and support staff who are working, as I said before, are working to get, get us through this crisis that we're having. And it originates at the Hackensack University Medical Center, or Hackensack Hospital, as some call it, Hackensack Meridian, and they felt, feel that if we can get the word out to the public to light a light on their, on their porch, or a lantern, or a Christmas lights, and even show our support for those workers, it'd be appreciated by them. This is to show them that we appreciate them. The letter that you received from our office today went to all the mayors and councils in the 37th Legislative District and municipal clerks, so you are the first, you are the first to recognize and to vote on this, so I want to thank you for, forgive me a few minutes, and I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Just a quick thank you, Gordon, for what you're doing, it's a lovely gesture, of course, it's going to be a lit, a light, not a flame that you're
No, it's a light, no.
Okay.
No flames, no flames.
Thank you, thanks, thanks for spiriting this.
I have a question, how are we going to get the word out? Do you have suggestions for that, like on the city website, or is your office going to do a PR campaign?
I would, was that question to me or to the city clerk?
To you, Gordon.
Well, to me, we use, we use social media from our different legislative offices. We're hoping that the cities will use what resources they have, like the city of Inglewood has that light board in front of the city hall there to, that way, and using your website to do it, so that is, that is what we, that was our intention, to have the different cities get it out in their own way.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, we will make that effort as we will take care of this resolution tonight, we will make that effort to put it on the marquee
Okay.
and Facebook.
Okay, thank you, Council President.
Thank you for knowing what you're doing. Nancy, I guess we have, we have to have a motion and a second for Resolution 117.
So moved.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Vote yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. The resolution is duly adopted, motion carries, the resolution is duly adopted. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, have a good evening. Communication from mayor and council, Mayor Wiles?
Yes, thank you, can you guys see me? I just hit a button, and I may have messed it up. Okay, good, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and again, to the council president and to the residents that are watching this, I'll try to keep my remarks brief, but you can well imagine, there's a lot to be said. April is Autism Awareness Month, it's also National Library Week from April 19 until April 25. Go on the library's Facebook page for the list of online events. Happy birthday to the many residents in the month of April, including my wife, 1,331 Inglewood registered voters, I am trying to spend the time calling as many as I can. Congratulations to police officer Mark McDonald for his many years of service upon his retirement, and congratulations again to the lovely couple, I had the pleasure of marrying on a front porch wedding on April 3rd. I will be doing other social distancing weddings, you will find me in gloves and with a mask, and only allowing what's permitted on my property, but this, the health department is accommodating requests. I think New York City is now going to be doing Zoom weddings, but we are going to make sure that we continue this tradition. And New Jersey has sadly lost over 88,000, to me, has reported more than 88,000 cases with 4,200 deaths statewide. Bergen County has 13,000 cases with 767 deaths, Inglewood has over 588 cases with sadly 30 deaths. We mourn the loss of all of these extraordinary people, and the families should give them much comfort. We particularly mourn Margaret Temple, who's the founder of the Family Teen Center, who helped a lot of our children. There were about three or four shiver visits that I paid through Zoom and so forth in our community. This has affected and hit many homes. The first cases, ladies and gentlemen, were reported on March 11th, it's now only April 21st, we only had three cases then. Congratulations to the 500th discharge recovered patient from the Inglewood Hospital. We also want to thank the many donations that are going on, Inglewood Recreation, who's provided 300 appreciation dinners for Inglewood health workers, Krispy Kreme Pizza, who donated pizzas to Inglewood health workers, Inglewood resident Jason Teigman, who organized Supplies Relief Fund, the five Inglewood synagogues who provided dinner to Inglewood Police, Fire, were going to arrange for the Park Rangers, they did to Public Works as well. Testimony of Church of Inglewood donated 1,000 surgical masks, and TJ Southern Comfort is doing Give Back Fridays, where portions are going to go to essential workers, that's coffee, soup, and meal. Please support Inglewood restaurants, if you're able to, ladies and gentlemen, they need the help, they're there for us, we need to be there for them on a takeout basis, and for those looking for work, ShopRite of Inglewood is hiring, and I understand that Home Depot in the region is also looking. We urge everybody to maintain social distancing, stay at home if it's not essential, try to have at least two weeks of food and supplies. Thank you again for ShopRite, for stepping up and making sure that we have six feet distance, one-way aisles, Plexiglas, and checkout, masks, Facebook, face coverings are required now in groceries and restaurants when picking up food, and we recommend, of course, washing hands frequently. For remote sessions like this, I want to thank the whole woman, I participated yesterday, Officer Hammond, who was recovering from his diagnosis, into his live sessions on Facebook and Zoom sessions, for Congressman Bill Pascrell, and there are other elected officials, and again, to Gordon Johnson for his leadership as well. There are some upcoming virtual sessions with Inglewood Library, a family online book club, the music with the library director, John Arthur, daily at 10 a.m. The music with the library director, John Arthur, daily at ten AM. And coffee with the mayor. I have the privilege of hosting a session every Friday at eleven o'clock. I'd like to also thank Yancey, our city clerk, for stepping so elegantly into the role as interim city manager, reminding us and all the officials to keep records of overtime and reimbursements that have to be made from FEMA, knowing, of course, that there's a consequence and there's going to be a cost to all of this. Ladies and gentlemen, this was a pandemic that had a power outage. And now our president, in many ways, would like to stop immigration, putting a lot of other people in harm's way out of this. These are scary times, and therefore, when residents step up and people are getting through this together, it's everything. I'd like to also thank a member of the Abbe's Torah community, who's going to be dropping off about a hundred face shields and screens. And some of my clients from Las Vegas that are also sending PPE into our Office of Emergency Management. I urge people who can see this and hear this to share in the same gesture. We also are keeping an eye on the Actors Home, the Bristol, and Englemore. There've been a ramp up of people who are vulnerable in assisted living and nursing homes. I'd like to wish all residents who observe a meaningful Ramadan. I reached out to Sultan Karim Ali, the leader of our mosque in Inglewood, who sends his prayers to the entire community. I also reached out to Warren Geller, the leader of Inglewood Hospital, under the leadership of our council president, our fire chief, and others. We're going to make sure that there is an inspirational thank you on behalf of our emergency services to they at the hospital who are on the front lines. And they're not the only ones on the front lines, the public work officials, all the rules and regulations and the pacing of our employees. And everything comes with great consequence. I've exchanged a lot of emails with residents that are out of work, people looking at the bottom line to see what if the city and the state and the federal government's going to do. We have to make sure that we do not lose a platoon in the fire department, that we don't lose a single police officer, and that any of those people that are affected can get better at, at home safely and that their position is covered amply for the residents of our city. The children are learning amicably, and I'm in touch with the superintendent of schools today. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a very, very sacred day in the Jewish faith. And for those who lost loved ones in the Holocaust, it's Holocaust Yom HaShewa Remembrance Day. I can't tell you how significant an impact this experience, this culture, has had in dealing with this pandemic from the experiences that I and the local synagogues and others have. We mourn the loss of those extraordinary souls, and we know what it takes to deal with historic challenges. And it's in their memory that we move forward. I would like to thank the scores of rabbis and the pastors and the imams that have done much to make sure that we're able to psychologically deal with this. And as I spoke to Mr. Geller, that's going to be our next challenge when it comes to doing a deep dive with the local companies and businesses and making sure, like post-Amazon, post-coronavirus, what's it going to take for you to want to invest and stay in our city so that we can continue the improvement in the schools, make Inglewood a destination, and make all the positive energy. And ladies and gentlemen, there's a lot of positive energy coming here. Our health director, our health officer, Jim Fedorko, is nothing but a godsend to our city. We have to thank those people that are out there, Public Works and officials, and we have to keep the budget tight. This is a very significant time. People are hurting financially, and we have to do more with less. And this is the year that we will share and live by example. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Glenn, please.
Uh, yes, good evening, everyone. I just want to offer my appreciation to the residents of Inglewood who have conducted themselves with a plume and have, for the most part, extremely calm and carried on. And it's a challenging time to do that, and I, my hats off to them. I also would like to say the same to the city employees in all departments, especially those who cannot work from home but have to perform their duties on our streets, in our parks, and elsewhere. And I just want to thank them for taking care of us and making sure that we have at least some normalcy to our daily lives.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes, thank you very much. And first and foremost, I just want to echo what my colleagues have said without being repetitive and just the sense of the gratitude that we all have for all of our healthcare workers, our healthcare institutions, and our first-line responders. You know, everybody who is in essential businesses and everybody who has been able to make sure to keep us going and keep us running and, and, and keep us, and keep us safe even at their own risk. You know, we can't, we can't thank them enough, we can't support them enough. So, you know, no matter how many times that, that needs to be said, you know, I, I don't think we could say it enough. You know, I, I also think, you know, one of the things we need to look at, you know, as we move forward, even though, you know, this budget from a tax levy perspective was our best in, in quite some time, we do have to face the realities of we're going to be dealing with people throughout the city who are going to be, if they haven't lost their jobs already, could be losing their jobs. If they haven't lost their, their jobs, or they could be losing percentages of their income in cuts. That, you know, we're going to be dealing with a whole new reality here from a financial basis. And we, we see all over the place, and I'm getting calls, and I'm sure all my colleagues, I'm sure, are getting calls on a regular basis about what can we do in terms of property taxes, what can we do in terms of other payments, what can we do in terms of, just, just the full gamut of financial concerns here. You know, as we know, a lot of that is controlled by the state, and a lot of that also, you know, we, we have contractual obligations for a lot of our budget and a lot of our spending. But, you know, we, we, as a council, need to make sure that we are cognizant of, of how the folks in our city are hurting. You know, both from a safety perspective and also from a health perspective. And, and this is not going to be a short-term hurt, unfortunately, it appears. You know, we, we need to look at our spending, we need to look at our services, we need to look at everything and, and make sure that, you know, we, you know, we demonstrate to the city that we understand and that, and that we're responsive to whatever degree we're able to. And, you know, in days, in days and months ahead, you know, we're going to have to be creative. And we're going to, you know, I know we keep on, you know, always saying, you know, make, you know, make more of less or some variation of that statement. But there is going to be less. There are going to be people who, if we don't help them, are going to lose their homes or, or, or lose, or, or have their, their savings wiped out or have, or have whatever else it is financially giving them major problems. And we need to make sure that, you know, we are sensitive to that and, and we act in accordance with making sure that on all fronts we, you know, you know, turn over every rock and see how we can be helpful in making sure to support and, and, and provide all the services we can, but keep our budget as tight as possible and keep our spending as tight as possible and, and make sure we protect everybody here, both health-wise and financially long-term. And, you know, we really need to look into it more deeply, you know, you know, with projections and maybe speaking to our, to, whether it's our bond councils, whether it's our, 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 you know, our, all of our fiscal experts in our city. You know, maybe putting them together and asking them to collectively sit around a table and see what else, what, what options we can creatively come up with. But we need to be really trying to figure out how we can be demonstrably sensitive to these kind of concerns as well. Another, another thing which I want to address, you know, a few things. Well, one is also, you know, one of the things that we're seeing, you know, throughout, you know, and unfortunately, in my, in my own, you know, profession, I see it, you know, you know, on a minute-by-minute basis. But we're also recognizing that unfortunately, there are plenty of hate groups out there that are using the pandemic to create narratives of hate. You know, we're seeing, you know, unbelievable rises of antisemitism, of racism. You know, we're seeing, you know, heightened amounts of felony hate crimes against, against Asian communities. We're seeing it against, against the Jewish communities. We're seeing everywhere. In most cases here, though, the, the actually physical crimes are lowered simply because people are sheltered in. But there is a very serious concern that once things open up, when you look at all the narratives and you look at everything on social media and you look at all of the, these sites of where we're going to be and what are, what are, what are people who unfortunately are in dire circumstances for whatever reason, if they've been listening to hate for, you know, for months on end, what are going to be those reactions? Are we going to have more lone wolves? I mean, if we remember, you know, there were already, you know, marches all over the, all over the Northeast against hate coming into the pandemic and coming out. You know, we really need to be cognizant, you know, of, of, of that reality and, you know, making sure that, you know, law enforcement, I know law enforcement is, I speak to law enforcement throughout the Northeast, you know, on a daily basis. And there is concern there, and we need to make sure that we're just, we're ready for it. And we, as, as people, you know, that have a platform, can make sure to correct, correct narratives that are false that are being put out there. I want to really commend our, our, our county clerk, John Hogan. A few weeks ago, there were, there were another surge of antisemitic posts and things saying that the synagogues in Bergen County were open and that yeshivas were open and things of that nature. So the Jews are obviously responsible for spreading the virus. You know, I went with him and with Rabbi Popko of Abbe's Torah and with some leadership in, in, from the press, Moshe Kindler of the Jewish Ling in Teneck and Bergenfield. And we toured, you know, the synagogues. We toured the yeshivas. We toured all those facilities with him to show him how even on those facilities, you had, on top of the regular locks, you had chain link and padlocks to make sure that even if people wanted to and had a key or had a code, they would not be able to, to get into those facilities, and those facilities were closed. We showed them how the stores were preparing. We showed them how in any, any of the stores that were, that, you know, the Plexiglas, the gloves, the masks, or all those kinds of things, which we did with him. And, and, and what he wanted to do was then to be able to say, you know, I can report from firsthand that these posts and these things that are being said, you know, are fictitious. They're simply blatantly false. And that, you know, the communities that are being, and communities that are being blamed, we need to show, and we need to tour, we need to show and, and comment on that these falsehoods about non-compliance in those regards, you know, are simply blatantly false and untrue. You know, doesn't mean that, that there's a hundred percent compliance across the board. If there was, we wouldn't have to take down our basketball hoops and we wouldn't have to make sure that, you know, in every ward, you know, we've had to, we've had to really be mindful and warn, you know, all of our, all of our constituents. And, you know, there's always going to be some percentage of, of non-compliance that we have to deal with. But leadership in every community, I think, is really on the right page, on the same page. We have to make sure to keep those messages really in the forefront. We need to keep the positive messages of every community in the forefront so that what the hatred's trying to do will not be able to penetrate the, the general mainstream consciousness. You know, I also, you know, today also, one of the things that I, that, you know, we're dealing with a lot and is, is today is, you know, also Yom HaShewa, the Holocaust Remembrance Day. You know, sort of day when, when we're seeing all this hate online to remember the six million who were, you know, Jews who were murdered by the Nazis. You're seeing programs, and I'm very proud to have seen in all schools, all denominations, you know, as a part of today, throughout our city and throughout our region and county, you know, programs via Zoom or whatever other digital platform to make sure that proper lessons and the history, you know, on, on hate is learned and, and is taught. And that, you know, we, we are all together. We are, we, we, we need to communicate. We need to continue teaching our kids even during the pandemic. And, and I, I think we've had overall, you know, today, a very successful day in doing so. You know, I saw my own kids on, on those kind of programs today, which were done very well. So, you know, we, we have a lot going on. We have a lot to be concerned about. But, you know, like we always say, Inglewood's strong. We're a strong community. And, you know, we need to continue exhibiting strong leadership so we can help, you know, all of our residents in the city get through the current trials and tribulations that they're facing and, and the future ones. So we should be able to hopefully, to the best of our abilities, anticipate and ameliorate. Thank you.
Councilman Hamer?
Sure, just want to make a few comments. First of which is, you know, repeating the thanks that everyone's been, you know, bestowing on all of our healthcare workers, Jim Fedorko and the health department, you know, Joe Sorbanelli and OB, you know, heading up OEM, police, fire, DPW. But not only them, you know, I'd like to thank all the residents for doing, those of us who are doing their parts. As the mayor said earlier, the number's up to six hundred of our neighbors who tested positive. This silent and deadly killer is, is for real, and we all have to take this seriously. So keep washing your hands, stop touching your face, and, you know, just be aware. Keep, keep distant. Make this work. You know, we can, we, we're the first line of defense. And, you know, you know, there are too many lessons learned from people that we know. You know, the, the sad part of it is we're losing residents, not just from the virus, but, you know, from natural causes. And because funerals can't be had and celebrations, you know, of life can't take place. People are, are going through that, that, that part somewhat, you know, in isolation. So, you know, just be aware and be sympathetic. This is, you know, we, we do extend condolences to all of those families. And, you know, we'll get through this. It's going to be painful. You know, there's a lot of fear, and rightly so. We should be afraid because too many people don't know what this is all about. And, you know, it's touching more people than we realize. So let's all do our parts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And, and I would just like to start by saying thank you, thank you to the healthcare workers. Thank you to the first responders. Thank you to our police department. And thank you to the residents, the merchants, everybody who's going through this. Because this is really unprecedented territory, and people are really standing up to the challenge. I, I, I think it's important that we recognize what people are doing. But, but also at this point, it's, it's a very sensitive time because we are losing, and I want to give my condolences to every family who has lost a loved one during this period of time. And they haven't been able to celebrate that loved one the way they wanted to because of the rules out here. And, and it's, and, and it's very sad. So my condolences to everybody in this space. We're thinking about you and we're behind you. But it's important that we follow the rules that have been given to us and we adhere to them. It's very important. These are the things that'll get us through here. But I got to tell you that our health department is critical to the city of Inglewood, and they have demonstrated unbelievable leadership following up, looking at this thing. I don't know where we would be without them. And also, in conjunction with our OEM, Joe Sorbanelli, these people are running around checking on things for the city, making sure that we have masks, making sure people are safe, making sure Shop Right is doing the right thing, making sure all the merchants are doing the right thing. And, and everybody really, really wants to do the right thing. So I, I, I think that the, the workers of the city of Inglewood, you know, we're still operating a full staff. And what I mean by that is we're, we're, we're still providing all our services. There have been some that have been, been curtailed, but for the most part, we're, we're operating and executing on a daily basis. And I have to commend those people for coming in, working remotely. And I'm going to ask the, the, the acting city manager, along with this council and governing body and the mayor, that there are two things that we need to work on. One is having a business continuity plan. And two is start to develop a pandemic plan as well so that we prepare ourselves for future episodes, or if that's what you want to call it, that we may be confronted with. And so whoever is sitting in these seats, they will have the playbook so they can serve the city of Inglewood. You know, we are out here living this right now, and what we should be doing is documenting the processes that we are going through. Each department should be doing these things, and we should be, these should be lessons learned, you know. And so it makes it a little bit easier for the people that come behind us. Because the people right now that are doing this on the fly are doing a great job, and, and I thank them. I truly thank them for, for what they're doing. And I want to say that, you know, one great example of this is the city of Inglewood partnering with the Board of Education to make sure meals are delivered. And people don't know that we're serving over a thousand people a day and that meals are being delivered with the coordination between the city and the Board of Education. And I commend those folks who are part of that process. You know, and and we are working together and people are coming together to make sure we can make it. And and I have, I have one ask is that if you have neighbors or family members that are living by themselves, that you pick up the phone and ring them, make sure they're doing all right, making sure that neighbors are knowing that you're checking on them. I think it's important right now that we 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 check on as many people as we can because there are some people who are living by themselves and you never know what's going on. So if you don't see somebody in two days knocking on the door or something, make sure that they're all right. Because we don't know, as Councilman Hamer said, we don't know what this thing is. This thing is reaching people and, you know, in all different kinds of ways. And and we're learning every day how this thing i- i- is manifesting itself. And, uh, you know, we we just have to continue to push, continue to be strong. And I and I ask everybody to to follow, uh, the information that's on the city website. It's it's up to date. It's the most, uh, recent information out there. The the city is doing a great job of putting it out there. They put it on the marquee. They put it on the Facebook page and the website. And if you follow that information, you're getting factual information. And that's what I'll say so because there there's a lot of misfacts as well. But if you if you do that, um, you'll be okay. And if you have any questions or concerns, uh, we talk to your council people. They'll direct the traffic to the right places, get into the right people, so we can react and respond to whatever it is. But listen, just be safe and, as Councilman said, continue to wash your hands and listen to any information that's coming out from us. Thank you. Yancy.
Okay, I just wanted to add to, in in addition to checking the city website. If you haven't signed up for Nixol, please sign up for Nixol. We are also using that as a platform to get information out to everybody. Um, and also just reminding everybody about the census. Please make sure if you haven't responded, uh, please go on the census. I know the paper version has has been mailed out and received by many residents. You can either do it online. You can send it back. Just please respond to the census. It it truly impacts the city and the percentage of aid that we receive from to the city moving forward. And this will, what the number and percentage that is responsive responsive in this year, that's going to impact the city for the next decade. So it's really important. Please tell your friends, family, neighbors. We're constantly posting all over the place. Please share. It's really vital that 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 be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, we we will now open up to public session. Give us your name, your address, and you have two minutes to speak.
And the same rule applies. If you're interested in speaking, please go to the reactions at the bottom of the page, raise your hand, and you will be called on. Anyone would like to speak, please do the reaction for raising your hand. Not seeing any.
Okay, give it a second. Okay. What's that? Is that somebody?
That was somebody's probably phone.
Okay. You don't have anybody, Yancy?
No, I'm not seeing anybody. Nobody's raising their hand. Nobody's reacting.
Okay, I'm going to close the public session. And Mr. Cool, you will take us into closed session.
No problem. Yeah, be resolved by the council of the city of Englewood pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Means Act that the council meet in closed session to discuss upon subject matters being personnel and matters within the attorney-client. The resolved that upon taking final action, uh, the matters can be disclosed to the public and be further resolved that although it's not in the council, we return open session after the meeting. The council reserves the right to do so upon conclusion of the closed session.
Okay, a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. We're in closed session.
And there will be no further taken, no further action taken, I believe, after we come back. So we will just be adjourning after a closed session.
Are we, are we on a different closed session Zoom?
Yes, I set that out as well today around six o'clock.
Yep, so we'll see everybody.
That was an email.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Bye, thanks.
See you there. Thank you, everyone.
All right, good night, Franz.
Hi.
Good night.